Good evening. I would like to call the October 7, 2025 City Council meeting to order at 6:32 PM. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov or in person, Men Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed the public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comments period. This meeting is being recorded and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 AM and after alternate Tuesday at 8:00 PM. An archive for viewing on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov. Now, we're going to proceed with the pledge of allegiance, invocation, and roll call. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by council member Stan Liu.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise and right hand of our heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Tim Park of Evangelical Free Church. Not on the phone. Okay, then we'll have Mayor Protem Steve Tai to do the invocation for us.
I was just getting ready to sit down. Would you pray with me? Lord, thanks so much for this day. We're just grateful for all the gifts that you've given us. We just pray, Lord, that you guide our thoughts, guide our everything that we are here to. You can tell I'm not ready for this. Just bless this city, bless this state, our country, and take care of everything that we're going to look forward to tonight. I pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. City Clerk Santana, can you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow.
I'm here.
Councilmember Liu.
Here.
Councilmember Lo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tai.
Here.
Mayor Ting.
Here. Thank you.
Next is approval of agenda. City Attorney Sandoro, are there any reportable action from the closed session today?
No reportable action tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
The agenda is hereby approved. Next session is a special presentation certificates and proclamation. And we have a San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments 2025 President Introduction. President Reese will be present to give a PowerPoint presentation. President Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, council members. As previously stated, I'm Ed Reese, proud to represent the city of Claremont and honored to serve this year as your new, actually this term, I should say, as your new president of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. Today, I'd like to show how the COG brings cities together to tackle challenges, deliver results, and make our region even stronger. The COG is truly a partnership. It brings together 31 cities, two county supervisory districts, and many local agencies across the San Gabriel Valley. Our mission is simple but powerful, to give our region one strong unified voice to deliver projects that improve transportation, housing, and sustainability, and most importantly, to improve the quality of life for nearly 2 million residents who call the San Gabriel Valley and in part, this great city, their home. This collaboration is what makes us stronger than the sum of our parts. Of course, a mission this big requires leadership. That's where our executive committee comes in. I'm proud to serve alongside a group of committed local leaders, including Third Vice President, Councilmember Chow. All of us chosen by our peers to help guide the COG's priorities. They help set the direction, review policies, and make sure our work reflects the needs and values of our member cities. In short, the executive committee and the governing board keep us grounded in the realities of our communities while keeping us focused on the future. And that leadership extends outward through our policy committees. Those committees are where real collaboration happens. They focus on the issues that touch every city: capital projects, the environment, homelessness, and transportation. We also draw on the expertise of city managers and working groups so that local voices shape our regional solutions. And this is where all of you come in. And if you haven't already, and I know many of you have, I encourage you to get involved. Your expertise and your perspective help ensure that your city's voice is heard and that your residents' needs are reflected in our regional decisions. Of course, leadership and collaboration are only part of the story. Implementation matters too. That's where our staff shines, and under the direction of Executive Director Marissa Kretor, our talented team takes the ideas and turns them into action. They provide the expertise, the project management, and support that make sure that our city's priorities are moving forward. Let me share a few examples of what collaboration has achieved. First, our construction authority. We're the only COG in Los Angeles County with this authority. We're delivering 19 major grade separation projects costing approximately $100 to $200 million each at little or no cost to our cities. And today, we're expanding to highway improvements, transit facilities, and active transportation projects. Second is SB 1383 compliance. This state law has, requires us to cut food waste going to landfills, and the COG has helped cities triple their business compliance rates and at the same time have helped food banks to be able to use the food donations they receive by providing them refrigeration and other needed equipment. It's truly a win-win, where we're helping the environment while addressing food insecurity. And third, Measure M funding. Last year, we directed $36.5 million to 17 San Gabriel Valley agencies for projects that make it easier and safer for people to get simply where they need to go. And these are just a few snapshots, but they show real tangible impact that the COG has had on our communities. And beyond these regional wins, we also partner directly with cities in unique ways. Specifically, I'd like to talk a little bit about Diamond Bar. As a funding partner, the COG governing board has awarded over $2.9 million in Measure M funding for the city's complete streets project. The project will enhance safety and mobility for pedestrians and cyclists on Diamond Bar Boulevard. In regards to project management, one of the COG's largest projects is the 5760 interchange improvement project. As this council and the community are aware, the two-mile stretch between these freeways are among the most congested and dangerous in the nation. The COG is currently overseeing the construction of new off-ramps, bypass bridges, and lanes. These improvements will enhance commuter safety, reduce congestion, and support the regional supply chain more efficiently. And then in regards to homeless outreach, the COG funds and manages homeless outreach teams from the Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse to support the city's homelessness efforts. The additional outreach teams are funded through previous Measure H funding. So I've shared a little bit about some specific examples in regards to your city. But the bigger point is this. The COG is dedicated to meeting you where you are, to support your local priorities, and while together, building something much larger across the region. At the heart of all of this is what binds us together: our shared love for the San Gabriel Valley. That is why I launched the iHeartSGV program. It grew from my deep belief that we are stronger when we celebrate our common values and the communities we call home. This program is about bringing our member cities and through them, their residents, together in shared pride and appreciation for the San Gabriel Valley. For me, it's also personal. My love of public service is soul-feeding, and this program is a way of, for me to show my gratitude for our region, for our cities, and for the people who make the San Gabriel Valley such a special place to live. The COG exists to serve you, your council, your staff, and your residents. By working together, our collective voice is louder, our reach is further, and we can deliver projects and services that no city could do alone. And as president, my number one priority right now is listening. I want to hear from you, your needs, your challenges, your opportunities, so that we can make sure you're getting the best out of your involvement with the COG. So please, don't hesitate to reach out to me directly. I'm committed to working with you and strengthening the San Gabriel Valley we all love. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and I would be happy to take your questions or your comments.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start with Councilmember Chow. I mean, you are the VP. I don't know you have president.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, President Reese, for coming and speaking to us. It's been an honor and privilege to serve as a delegate for my city to be on the COG and now be a third VP for the COG. So it's been a lot of fun. We do a lot of things as a group to further the mission of the San Gabriel Valley, also of the COG. And people may or may not know this, but the COG is one of the few entities that actually has budget from the state and they continue to fund projects that President Reese has mentioned, such as the 5760 Confluence Project, a lot of grade separation that you see at Flirtin and Nogales Road. So those are all COG projects. I think the latest one's Montebello. And I also had the opportunity to sit on the homelessness committee, the regional housing trust, which provides funding to help bring a lot of these interim housing projects online. Without the funding, a lot of this project would not be possible. So it's been such an honor and pleasure to serve with you and the rest of the team behind you. Don't want to, I'll be remiss if I didn't mention our staff in the back there behind you, but they do all the work and this is a fantastic group. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to ask Councilmember Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. President Reese, thank you so much for coming. It's been an honor for me to sit with you and the rest of your team that are here today on the Capital Projects Committee. I can't believe how much I've learned sitting on that committee, so I just really respect you for all that, all the knowledge that you bring with you because that's a really big job. I just wanted to share with you that this homelessness and the housing trust is really a big, it's really a big task. This week, I had occasion to look at some videotapes, and in this videotape, it was a scene where it was late in the night and the place was deserted except for three individuals who were just kind of hanging out at this location. It was completely deserted. They had nowhere else to be. And it really struck me that that's really a terrible way. These are humans. It's a terrible way for humanity to be. And that's a problem. It really touched me, and I'm really glad that you and your team are working on that because they're human and they need our care and some guidance. And we need to do better. So thank you so much for being here and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Stan Liu to ask questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, President Reese. Congratulations. And congratulations to Chow and our staff, Marissa, Steph, and Ricky. So I appreciate your message. I see that here. I love that. I love SGV. And the three bullet points that are on here are share values, local pride, and mutual support. We all share values and mutual support, and I would imagine, I can see that each one of our cities, we have a pride and we have different needs, even within the San Gabriel Valley region. How do you, how do we collectively, and we can help that, bring all that together, that our local pride can work toward share values and mutual support?
Well, I think there's a combination of things, but definitely the engagement that I know that you have had within the region, engaging on the COG and the COG policy committees. I do know that staff is engaged. I work hand-in-hand with your staff as well. And so there is a number of ways to be able to be engaged in shared pride, but also have the, your specific needs addressed. And so I think there's a number of opportunities there, not to take up a lot more time here, but I think there's definitely a lot of opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Next, Mayor Protem.
President, congratulations. You look taller in person. This is an excellent presentation. It was, and all the time I've been on the council, I don't think I've ever seen a presentation from the incoming president, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Now, it's my turn. President Reese, I take it from your presentation, you mentioned that you have been, that your organization, the COG, has been involving these, some projects to bring housing to relieve the homeless issue. And earlier this year, I've been to Baldwin Park City to tour their tiny home facility, which is very nice. But you know, to me, I think those kind of units usually is suitable for people who suffer from some kind of disaster or some kind of tragedy to lose their home, that they want to find some shelter, find some places. But I think for a lot of people who may have a mental problem, who may have a drug abuse problem, who are always sleeping on the street during, in our cities, in other areas during the night, I think what we need is probably building a shelter just for them to go there overnight, not necessarily housing them for a prolonged period of time. And do you have any plan to establish or build some shelters for those kind, those people overnight in these areas?
No, it's a great question, Mr. Mayor. I will share that in a number of ways, the COG has really partnered with our cities on a number of initiatives and projects around this area. If we look at the city of Azusa, we partnered with the city of Azusa on a LifeArc project there. But, and then if you look at our neighbor, your neighbors to the east in Pomona, I know that they have a shelter, a hope-for-home specifically, as it's called, a shelter there. So I think there is definitely an opportunity. If it's something that this council wants to do and is really passionate about getting it done, I'm sure the COG can step in and collaborate and partner with you on getting something more specific around this area or within your city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just two last things. One, forgive me, I do have another council meeting to go to in Monrovia, so forgive me as we step out when I conclude my presentation. But also tonight, you may see just the red dot from there because it's small lapel pin, but it is the iHeartSGV lapel pin, and tonight I bring as my gift to you your own set of lapel pins that you can wear proudly in the city and across the San Gabriel Valley and beyond. So with that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next session is the special presentation certificates. Oh, no, we've done that already. Next session, there's a city manager reports and recommendations. Mr. Fox, is there any report?
No additional reports this evening.
Thank you. Well, go next, go to the next session of the public comments. Public comments is a time reserved on each regular meeting's agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on concerned calendar items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the council, city council values your comments, pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There's a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then City Clerk Santana will ask for those callers joining the teleconference who may wish to speak under public comments. I have my first speaker card is from Cynthia Yu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Are you a brave reader? During the month of October, kids ages seven to 12 are encouraged to check out a bag from the children's area, then venture into the unknown with your mystery read. Fill and return the enclosed review card for an opportunity to win mystery bags filled with special prizes. Celebrate banned books weeks with us. This week, we honor the freedom to read and the diverse stories that shape our world. Visit Diamond Bar Library to pick up an I Read Banned Books sticker or bookmarks and share how you celebrate your right to read. Plus, teens can participate in our online Books on Banned Reading Challenge for a chance to win prizes. Cozy season is coming. Celebrate all things cozy and comforting by trying your hand at speed puzzling at the library on Monday, October 20th at 4:00 PM. Grab your friends or register solo and join a team on the night of the event. Teens of up to four players will have two hours to complete a 500-piece puzzle. First to finish wins. Even if you don't compete, Even if you don't compete, you are invited to bring jigsaw puzzles from home and swap with your fellow puzzle lovers. We also explore library resources related to all things cozy. This program is for adults. All LA County Library locations will be closed on Monday, October 13th, in observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day. We are always open online. Get eBooks, audiobooks, movies, and musics, and more at lacountylibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card is from N.G.
The Honorable City Mayor and the distinguished members of the city council. My name is Nee Kong. I'm the president of TACF, Together Against Crime Foundation. This month, in October, we are hosting a town hall meeting right here in this beautiful auditorium. And it's on October 23rd with special guests DA Nathan Hoffman and also the Los Angeles County Sheriff's from both Walnut, Diamond Bar, and Industry Stations. Together, we will discuss crime prevention. And this is open to the public. Everyone is invited to come, enjoy the information, and there will be like snacks and refreshment will be served. And we look forward to everyone coming to a very important session for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any flyers for that? No?
I have one other comment, a question. We have brought some flyers for the meeting. Is it possible for us to leave it with the front desk?
Yes, leave it at the front desk.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker card comes from Alan Wilson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Alan Wilson. I'm a Diamond Bar resident. I just want to say right off the bat that I believe that every worker is entitled to dignity and respect on the job, knowing that they bring something valuable to the table. I was a little surprised to learn that, an article that was written by an individual who is a member of the AFFCME District Council 36, AFFCME, which stands for American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, is an article that entitled "Our Fight for Fairness How We Form a Union at Diamond Bar," dated January 29, 2025. I hope that this article is put in in public record for everyone to read this. I was a little shocked when I learned about some of these things, did not know that this was happening to one of our city employees. And I'll read you a passage, what it says in here. Quote, "We dealt with inconsistent hours, fluctuating pay charts, lack of recognition, and toxic workplace culture where management often dismissed our voices. We are a part-time worker union of about 60 for the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Diamond Bar. We are tired of being undervalued, but for years, nothing changed. High turnover of playground department and longtime colleagues have left because they couldn't take it anymore." I'm paraphrasing, I'm pretty dumb, it's a four-page article, it's pretty sobering to read. And I think people in the community should be reading because I'm at the task pair, finding out that these people who bring something to the table and put sweat and tears to provide something to the community. And they went on, this individual will go on saying, "Organizing with no easy fees. The city resisted every sub of the law. They restricted access to key chain policy issued to frequently asked questions about a union election that felt like deliberate attempt to intimidate us." Wow. Going on down here, "While full-time workers received cost of living raises over the years, we went over a decade without raises at all. These part-time employees don't get benefits, but the five councilmembers get healthcare benefits and a comp hurt pension and so forth." And the last part was, you know, the individual admitted that "we are preparing to begin bargaining, the atmosphere has shifted. For the first time in years, I felt optimistic about the future. We are pushing for fair schedule, inconsistent hours, recognition for milestones, and a culture of respect and accountability. We are fighting to make sure no one fought to find their own shift covered when they are sick." Are you serious? And not make every employee treated with the dignity they deserve. We don't even have designated areas to take breaks. We are in a sword closet for chairs, tables, and chemicals." You know, I lived at Diamond Bar for 29 years. This is the last thing I want to read, city employee. And this is very disappointing to me that I don't know what's going on behind closed doors. I know you've been having negotiations with the FAS union for quite a while, but as a community member of the community, I know nothing what's going on. And I'm very shocked to learn about this. But I hope going forward, I myself believe that every employee have a right to set up unions, right to classically get their rights. You know, for so long, you have management saying to the high almighty that they think they could walk over employees for getting the employee bring something to the table. I believe management and employees could work together. Not a top-down organization, not a bottom organization, it's an ad organization. But I hope that there's a resolution to this and so forth. And I'd give to the employees who form the union more power to them and make sure you get your voices heard. But I hope I never want to see this again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alan Wilson. This is all the speaker card I got. And City Clerk Santana, were there any public comments, emails received, or are any callers on the line?
Mr. Mayor, there were no emails submitted for public comment tonight, and there are no callers on the line at this time.
Is anyone else want to address the city council at this time? Seeing now, I'm going to close the public comments session.
Mayor, if I may?
Oh, please, go ahead.
If I may briefly respond to that last comment. While I'm not at liberty to talk about any of the specifics, the city denies the allegations that are included and made in that social media posts. And I want to reassure the public that their, that the actions of the city staff are in line with our performance or, excuse me, our personnel rules and regulations. And we want to just make sure that their job duties are consistent in a manner that does not waste taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Is there other people want to address the city council at this time? Seeing now, I'm going to close the session now. The next session is schedule of future events and consent calendar. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of the upcoming events and then proceed with the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, October 14th, starting at 6:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. The annual State of the City address will be presented by Mayor Tang on Wednesday, October 15th, starting at 5:30 p.m. at the Diamond Bar Center. This is a free event. Our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, October 21st, starting at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQMD Auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the September 16th regular meeting minutes, approval of the check register dated September 10th through September 30th, approval of the treasurer's statement for August, adoption of resolution 25, 2025-33, transferring public storm drain improvements related to the South Point development to the LA County Flood Control District, approval of a notice of completion for the Maple Hill Park Playground Restroom and Site Improvement Project, and approval of a notice of completion for the Pantera Park Hard Court Rehabilitation and LED Light Retrofit Project. That concludes the consent calendar for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Would anyone like to pull any items for discussion? If not, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion for approval.
A second.
So we have a motion and we have a second. The City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Tang?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed. Next session is the public hearing. There are no public hearing items on tonight's agenda. Moving on, the next session is council consideration. Also, there's, there are no council consideration items on tonight's agenda. Moving on, next session is council subcommittee reports and meeting attendance reports, council member comments. We are going to, again, start with the councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, actually, next few days, I'll be attending the Cal Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach. And we'll be attending a lot of different sessions to learn about kind of the latest developments in Sacramento and locally, and to hopefully bring some of those ideas back for, to further improve our city and the way we do things. So that's happening next couple of days. Just kind of generally speaking, I want to say that the city council, I'm sure the staff, we take a lot of pride in making sure that our work environment is respectful and also it's a positive environment for our employees. And we take a lot of pride in that, and we'll continue to do our best to make sure that our staff is supported and that our council is supportive of everything that our staff does. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Next, we go to Councilmember Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. I'd actually reiterate, I agree with Councilmember Chow's comment regarding our council's position and our, the way we value our staff. So I think that our staff is well aware of how we feel and we will move forward and to deliver the best service we can to our residents. This last couple of weeks, I attended the Library Commission, and I also attended the Southern California Edison's Virtual Tour. And in that virtual tour, we were treated to a tour of the Emergency Operations Center, which is the California Edison's hub for emergency management. And so it was really neat to see the different things that they offer in terms of getting ready for responses to wildfires, earthquakes, the event of a weather station, and then they get ready for cyber attacks and anything else that could impact our public utility services or the continuity and the safety of that service. So SEC is doing a good job there. And then we were also taken on a tour of the Emergency Education Center. And this center is actually a physical center in Irwindale. And they demonstrated the energy management and clean air energy systems. And they have interactive displays, classes, workshops, and technical consultants available for, actually for public tours. And interestingly, Southern California Edison, they have the ability to lend regular citizens tools so that you can check it out to see if you, if you like these types of energy tours, energy, energy tools, including my favorite. You can borrow or check out pots and pans. So it's true. You can check out cookingware to use for induction ovens and an induction oven because that's an, that's an electrical cooking appliance. So you can check it out before you put that into your house. So it's really kind of innovative. So that was very, very interesting. And so we have an energy, Southern California SEC liaison, so if anyone wants to check that out, she can be reached through our city office. Just wish our residents happy harvest moon festival, right?
Yes.
Yes, harvest moon festival. If you're celebrating that, hope you have a great time with your family and eat lots of mooncakes. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Liu.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank your staff for a great meeting today. And I echo Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Lo, and we value and support our staff very much. Thank you for the great work you do. Last week, last Friday, actually, the Burning Iron Game was at Diamond Bar High School. So it was a very, very fun game and it was packed and supposedly it was a rival game. And what was really heartwarming was the kids in the community come together, although we have a rivalry game, but our kids and students may give gifts for each other for the visiting team. And what was really heartwarming was seeing them, the parents from different high schools embracing each other in the parking lot, just like seeing old friends again. That is very cool and that's showing the spirit of community. Thank you. And next week, next week is a fun week. We have our awesome restaurant week. The Diamond Bar has over 100 eateries and coffee shops and all of that. And that looking forward to a fun, yummy week. But wait, there's more. Through the ShopLoco and Open Rewards app, everyone will get about 20% back from our purchases in supporting a local community. So we'll see you out in restaurant week and also we'll see you at the State of the City with Mayor Tang, next Wednesday. With that, I say good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Tai?
Thank you, Mayor. Listening tonight to public comments, it reminds me of something that I read one time. It's a quote, "You can't always believe what you read on social media." And it was signed by Abraham Lincoln. So I think everybody realizes that you, people can say what they want to say. That's what, that's what we're here to do is to listen to them, but there also has to be some defense and support for our staff. We appreciate everything that you do and we want you to keep up the good work and keep your head down and don't pay attention to that. Congratulations to Ed Reese as the new president of the COG. He sounds slightly energetic, so I'm encouraged by that. And it occurs to me that we'll all be home before he gets to Monrovia. So that's, that's his challenge. And the last thing I'll say is based on last night's game, go Dodgers. Thanks. Good night and God bless you.
Okay, so for me, of course, I want to say next week is a big week for me, right? State of the City address by me. And I just, just heard the councilmember Liu said, there's a fun week for the restaurant week, fun week for the shopping, eating, Diamond Bar week. I wish he had us for fun at the State of the City address meeting. But okay, I hope that everyone will be able to attend to see what's going on in our city. And I hope everyone will have fun after the event. I mean, I don't want it to be a very serious, very severe kind of a meeting. I want everybody go home smiling. Okay. So with that, I'll say good night and see you next week. Bye-bye. Okay, this is what, for the tackle, just reminder. Reminder of the tackle meeting. I don't want to make it as a meeting. Reception so that it won't be like a Brown Act that we are having. A meeting for one hour. Oh, yeah, yeah. For you, as a reference.